Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is September 26, 2018, at 7:33 PM. I call the meeting to order, and I can have a roll call.
Mayor Cran jack?
Here.
Councilperson Versta. Eve Park? Here. Oh. Ms. Morrow?
Here.
Ellen Park?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Present.
Borough Clerk? And Councilwoman O.
Here.
Everyone's present, ma'am.
Thank you. Let's all rise and start our meeting with the flag float.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the required provisions on my nation, on my God, in the midst of all the liberty and justice of this world.
Thank you. Just as a side note, if you have an opportunity to Google YouTube, there's a seven-year-old girl who sang the National Anthem last weekend at the LA Galaxy soccer game. It was amazing. You should Google this National Anthem rendition. She did a great job. Seven years old. Try to get her here. Okay, may I have the Open Public Meeting Act statement read into the record?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. So this evening, you'll see the next section of the agenda is the public portion, but I think it's going to be better for us and for the public to be able to participate fully and properly if we move the public portion to after our closed session. So we'll have a motion now to go into closed session, and then we'll come out, and then we'll have public portion at that time. So can I have a resolution to go into closed session, please? Or a motion, rather?
Go move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the appropriate language for us to go into closed session?
18-196. Resolution authorizing closed session at meetings pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. The mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, and whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSE 10:4-12. Number one, regarding borough of Englewood Cliffs, affordable housing. Number two, 800 Sylvan Avenue versus the borough of Englewood Cliffs, mayor and council and planning board. Number three, 800 Sylvan Avenue versus the planning board. Number four, attorney-client advisory and consultation on pending litigation disciplinary matters, appointment of two hearing officers. This is a general discussion. And number five, discussion of Attorney Patino letter requesting payment of fees in Eastwood versus Borough, Oh, Versta, and Ellen Park.
Okay, so as the clerk just read, we're going to go into closed session. This is for a number of reasons, as she mentioned, to protect the interests of the borough regarding confidential matters, and for people in the public who aren't familiar with what we're doing, and people who are watching it on tape, we have to do this to protect our interests. We have two plaintiffs in litigation sitting here in our chambers right now, Ms. Geiger and somebody from Baby Padavano, so we just need to do this to protect our interests best. Okay, we'll see you probably in about half an hour.
Mayor, if I might add, also with respect to item number four, no rights notices have been given to any individual employees because this is just a general discussion. When persons are to be refused regarding either item number four or number five, I will be asking them to vacate the closed session.
Okay, thank you. See you shortly. Okay, I'd like to have a motion to come out of closed session.
Go move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I apologize for the delay. We had to meet with the borough council on a one-on-one basis on some of the matters, so it took longer than expected.
And Mayor, if I might, before the public portion is undertaken for the record, on 18-197, appointment of hearing officer, the motion will be made for appointment of Allen Roach to handle disciplinary matters as assigned by the borough administrator. His rate will be $160 an hour.
How much?
$160. Yeah, no, no, we're gonna wait for the vote. They get to talk about it.
Okay, so what we had done--
One more thing. Hold on. 18-198 is appointment of hearing officer, Brian Cronick, not for any particular matter, but as assigned by the borough administrator, and these are for disciplinary matters. His rate is $160 an hour.
Okay, we wanted to have the public speak after our closed session, so we changed the order of the agenda. So I'd like to have a motion to open to the public for comment.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public--
Where are the other votes? We're sitting in the audience, so the public portion is--
Okay, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand, wait for me to recognize you, and then, once I do recognize you, come up to the microphone on the table here and state your name and address and what's on your mind. Jane, I'm gonna ask you, just move that stand away. Okay, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand now. Sure, yes. Did you? Yes. All right, just to explain what's going on, 'cause I see some puzzled faces out there. Councilwoman Morrow has stepped off the dais, and she's also a citizen resident, and she gets to also speak as a citizen and resident, and that's what she's going to do now.
Is someone listening?
Yes, I'm listening.
My name is Carol Morrow. What I'm going to be doing is playing the one tape that has not been marked confidential by the courts under the DCO, which is a discovery confidentiality order. I just found out that that tape, this tape, is not marked confidential, and it is allowed to be played, and it actually is allowed to be--
What's the background of that tape? Where's it from?
I'm gonna play it first for the public, and then I'll make a statement after that.
Okay. Is that some of litigation?
This is tape number 100, and it was received in litigation of Chaffey versus the borough at Al.
And this is one of the tapes that Chief Chaffey made?
I really don't feel comfortable--
Okay.
--with any questions.
All right.
I'll make a statement at the end, and if anybody has any questions later, they can ask them, but I just want to--
Okay.
--have my right to speak as a citizen. Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to figure out how to do this. Hello? Oh. Oh. Wait a second. That's-- Who? Oh. This is--
She's a little bit of a jerk, though. I mean, I'm wondering if it's been too tight. I have to say--
Hello?
Mark and Julia?
Oh. This is-- This is my--
[laughing] Hello? Oh. This is-- This is-- Hello? Oh. This is-- 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 Yeah, get the rat, and that's it. Calling you back? Was Maureen where? Where is she? Are the doors closed? Are windows closed? I put away the fellas, ten people there. Tell me there's ten people there. Was cow breaking late trying to break my balls yesterday or what? It's just unbelievable. They didn't wanna pay anything on my things, and that's what-- I guess that's what--
Were you screaming at her standing there before I came in? Were you screaming at her?
I don't think I was screaming at her. I mean, I raised my voice, but I raised my voice 'cause I talk loud. No, I wasn't screaming at her. If I was screaming at her, you know--
It's like--
It's like the killer, but I can't do that. Huh? No, you know, I look at the-- I look-- It might be-- I look at the Shawshank Redemption and say, hm, you know?
Oh, my God!
[laughing]
At the start of the tape-- At the start of the tape, Chief Chaffey states into the recording, "Today is January 4th, and it is 9 o'clock. It appears that the year is 2017." So I'm playing it here for you tonight so you can have an idea of what these tapes are like. This is-- I would really appreciate your attention, Councilwoman Versta. Councilwoman Park, if you could put your phone down and stop texting, I would really appreciate it. And Councilwoman O. This is just one of 120 tapes made by Chief Chaffey while on duty. There are other tapes with content equally disturbing to this, if not worse. The conversation on this tape is between Chief Chaffey and borough employees. At approximately 4:19 on the tape, the chief enters what appears to be the tax office. Shortly thereafter in the tape, the chief says about me to other borough employees, quote, "She is one hell of a bitch, let me tell ya," end quote. The chief then goes on to say to the borough employees, quote, "Boy, was she breaking my balls yesterday or what?" End quote. Chief Chaffey then goes on to say to this borough employee, "I'd like to kill her, but I can't do that." Then he wears everything. And then the chief and this borough employee go on to discuss whether or not it would be worth it. Just imagine, a chief of police on duty, carrying a borough-issued gun, discussing with a borough employee whether or not ending my life would be worth it. I am extremely concerned about this conversation. I expect everyone on this council to fulfill their responsibilities. And as you go around and make statements and give your press conferences, Gloria, please don't tell people that we are the cause of illegal fees. This tape speaks for itself, as will the other 119 tape recordings. But I look forward to letting-- that you're here. Remember, this was a lawsuit brought by Chief Chaffey against the town and naming me the mayor, Mark Park, and Renzo Consavo. And yesterday, in federal court, the federal court judge dismissed all counts against me in Chief Chaffey's lawsuit. And just a couple weeks ago, the case against me by Officer Oost was dismissed as well. So the only thing that's pending is Ellen Park's request for emails, which I already gave her anyway. So, please, I want that to be clear. There's not anything pending against me at this moment by Chief Chaffey. I've been cleared. I look forward-- I look forward to you listening to the tapes.
All right. Thank you. Just for everyone's record, it's always important to look at things objectively, which is what I've always tried to do in regards to these tapes, as hurtful as they are. I do want everybody to hear these tapes, because I think it's important that you know that the truth is rooted in facts and not consensus, and we have facts now. The borough owned the recorder that the chief made those recordings on during work time, for which we're paying him salary, and I demanded the return of the recorder in writing three times, and our borough administrator has also demanded it. We didn't receive it, so I filed criminal charges for theft of the recorder against the chief. This is no different than if he took his car and disappeared with it. Okay, so we-- the borough owns this property, and we want it back. And then the charges we're working through now as well. Anybody else from the public wishing to be heard? Yes, behind you. Yes, please come my lap. Oh, and also, the chief took the Fifth Amendment right against self-incrimination at one of his depositions.
Do you want to--
Yes, please, ma'am, if you don't mind. State your name and address.
Charlotte Mall, 151 Versta Avenue. I would like to know why you have a chief running. He listens to these conversations. During the course of anyone's business day, they may have a conversation that might not pertain to the work that they do. Why do you have a chief running? And does that person know that they're being recorded?
Let me just clarify for you. The chief made those recordings, not me and not anyone up here. The chief himself recorded himself saying those things.
Why do you think he did that?
I can't answer that question, ma'am. In most reasonable people's minds, it makes no sense, but he did it. And then he turned it over, and that's why we're dealing with it.
Something is not making sense.
No, and then--
Maybe to you, but turning off--
No, it doesn't make any sense to me either, but what he thought he was doing-- he didn't realize he was recording everything, I don't think. I think he left the microphone on. And to answer your other question, no, people were not informed by him, our chief of police, that he was recording us.
Well, maybe he didn't hear Laura said it was called--
No, no, no. There are 120 tapes, over 40 hours, done over the course of a year by the chief. There are 120 tapes. He did it deliberately.
Ma'am, on some of the tapes, he's saying testing 1, 2, 3, okay? So he knew. He knew. I mean-- and I hope you get to hear him too, because it's--
Thank you. You can listen, ma'am.
All right. Well, I already did, so I can say--
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Dave T. Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. I hope everyone's having a pleasant evening, and I hope the pleasure that certain people are having are-- to do things like to your neighbors. Removing a sign with the deceased man's name off of the building, the administration building. The man was dead. And it was done unilaterally, without even checking with the deceased man's family. That deceased man happened to be our mayor, and the mayor had a son who was also the mayor, fellow residents in town. You're calling evil out to somebody else. Let's look at yourself, Mario Cran Jack, as a human being. You removed another deceased man's memorial that was placed in a park without the decency and humanities of checking with that deceased man's widow, who happened to be a Holocaust survivor and a neighbor in town and a prominent citizen in town. What kind of man would do that, Mario Cran Jack? Unilaterally. Then Mario Cran Jack, the human being who's interested in facts, moved the stone, the commemorative stone, without checking with this person's family. So you have a tape being played, and you are basically no saint yourself, Mario Cran Jack. You're not a neighbor, and you're not a feeling person, and you don't know how to put facts and feelings together, which makes you really not a nice person to be leading this town. And I put lead in quotes because meanwhile, as you have created this vendetta against the police department, and you have many a time called out the salaries of our finest in town. Doesn't matter how much they make, it's a negotiated salary, and that includes the chief. We have two people on this side, nice people that are running, but limp. No mavericks on this side of the table. You should have been called out for what you did, and you were not. You should have been called out to removing the stone. You were not. You should have been called out for removing the name of these deceased people. You were not. And you say it's the rule of law, and this and that, but that shows how unfeeling of a man you are. And that's not leadership. That's not leadership at all. While this is all going on, and you're creating a very, very bad relationship between you, the administration, and our finest in town, you've appointed people to the planning board that with all of your stuff that you've been causing and all this hard feelings, you took your eye off the ball. If you and Mr. Perrino would have sat down with the previous planning board president and reached out and had a conversation with him and was able to sound him out, why is it not good to have residential on 9W? What kind of strain is it going to cause on our schools? How much is it going to send up the taxes that you've sent up through all of your litigation because you have not led? You have not reached out? So basically, we're left in a very, very bad situation. And what you're doing, you're playing these tapes here, and you're trying to hide against this and all your failure--
I didn't play any--
--leadership.
I didn't play--
And what you're doing-- And what you're doing, basically, I don't think you could sit up there and say one decent thing that you've accomplished substantial for this town. You've had the taxes go up. You've got us in a litigation pickle, I mean, a huge pickle, from all of this bad feeling that you have caused, and maybe the council president also. So it's a shame that we're all living in the same community, and we have this massive inefficiency because of certain attitudes that are unhealthy for the individual that has them and unhealthy for the town and the residents in this town. And I have to say that, and I really will encourage the two candidates that are-- the candidates that are running, and Mr. Wu, to be maverick and do what's decent for your neighbors in town. And if Mario Cran Jack is acting out like a brat, that you call him out, George, because that's what he needs. He needs to be called out. He really needs to be called out. If I-- I have every right to call the mayor a brat. A brat.
Okay, are you finished?
Not quite yet. Not quite yet.
You're over-- You've taken enough time, and now--
Okay.
Now you're just repeating yourself, so I'm gonna ask you--
No, I'm not. I have one more major thing to say.
I'm gonna ask you to finish.
One more major--
You had no major things to say so far, but if you wanna say one more thing, that's fine. Go ahead.
So they're not major because you don't like them? That's why you are belittling what I'm saying? So you don't like them, so you're making less of what I'm saying, and you're not taking it seriously? Is that the trend? Is that leadership? Uh-uh. It ain't leadership. It ain't leadership at all. And I voted for you. I want to say to everyone in this room, I voted Republican. I voted for Mario Cran Jack. And if there's one person that I'm disappointed the most in this room, it's Mario Cran Jack, because I had high hopes for him. I had high hopes that he would reach out to the previous administration, get their knowledge, reach out across the aisle, and bring finally this town to a together. Failed. F. Zero.
So what I always encourage people in the audience to do is to attack issues and not attack people. What that gentleman just did was attack people, so a lot of his message is lost. But let me mention a few things. The names on the signs that were taken down in the rock, those were never authorized to be there in the first place. So as a leader and as the mayor, it's my job to have order, and order starts with doing things lawfully, which people have to get permission to do.
Stop being a good day.
You're out of order. Then, you know, in terms of facts, you know, facts are based on truth. They're not based on your feelings or on consensus of the people in the back of the room over there or the people over here. We have facts that support truth, and that's what I do, okay? I look at the facts, and that's how I'm dealing with things here. In terms of the planning board-- You're out of order. You're out of order. You had your chance, and I'm gonna rebut you, point for point. In terms of the planning board, our chairman, Russell Perrino, is here tonight. I thank him. I thank him for the great job he and his team have done on the planning board. I greatly appreciate your efforts, and it's only the people who don't know all the facts that could get up and speak so illogically the way this gentleman just did.
Six hundred extra units.
Enough from you. Enough from you. In terms of taxes, another mistruth, okay? Let's deal with facts. During the four years that Democrats were in control, they raised municipal tax rate by an average of 5.3% per year, including in one year, 2015, when the taxes were raised by 9.1%. During the three years that I've been here as mayor, we raised municipal tax by an average of 2.8%, which is roughly half, okay? So I think we're doing a very good job under the circumstances. And don't forget, we're also being filed with a lot of litigation expenses by people such as the chief. We just heard his tape. So here's what happens. He pretends to be a victim, right? So he sues the town, he sues me. And then he produces these tapes, which no one could understand why he would do this, but he did. So everything I thought was happening that I could never prove, he just proves for me. So actually, he's the aggressor in all this. We're the victims. You're the victims because we have to pay to defend ourselves and to deal with this nonsense, okay? Next person, if anybody would like to be heard? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Leidy Dunbar, 2001, I live in 33 East Baby Avenue, Inglewood Cliffs. The reason I want to speak out when I heard today here, this is not the first time I've been in this meeting. And a couple of months ago, I'm sure you guys remember, I came up and I told you, I'd been chased by one of them, the police officers. With gun on his hand, on whom his hand was on a gun, chasing me because I told him, put the ticket on my truck. I will move it. And today I heard what chief saying about, I want to kill somebody, the councilwoman, McMarlowe. And I think this is disrespectful. He's the number one policeman in this town. How do I feel now? I have the two kids. If one of them, this guy, pulled down and shot me, who's gonna take care of my two kids? Nine and eight years old. I hear people in the back giggling when she was talking to me here, explaining her situation. I heard all that. Who's gonna take care of my kids? Police chief? This town? Nobody gonna take care of them, nine and eight? This just comes from me here. I went through this. And I want to inform all of you that I'm taking a legal action because what happened to me personally, they did some kind of an internal investigation here. I have an opera tape, that day what happened. The police chief was playing favorism for somebody else. It's okay to somebody else's truck being parked because he doesn't have enough space. But me, it's not okay. What does that mean? You guys have to look at very seriously because he is the role model for guys who is gonna come to this town and serve to this town. I support our people in the uniform. I do. I support them. But I don't support anything like this, what's going on here? I want to kill her, but I cannot kill her? That's wrong. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, I heard the way you and old councilwoman and man here respecting the survival of genocide, Armenian genocide, Holocaust. I really appreciate that. And I heard some wrong stuff going on. And whatever you guys do, please look in the future of this town. Please. And take really serious. This is... If I say something, I want to kill somebody, I'd be probably in jail today.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tony Moore, President of 26 South, Inglewood Cliffs. I heard the tape. Pretty stupid, pretty... I'm sorry. They speak for themselves. I'm here for another reason. I felt like an omnibus man. Last week, in fact, for the past four weeks, I went to the buildings department and asked for an appointment and left my number four times for Mr. Melphy. I wanted to know why at 460 Sylvan Avenue they were allowed to put a sign with a tooth on top of the building. And when they were denied a permit for a sign, he put lights throughout the whole building and lit it up like the statute of liberty. I was able to meet the administrator, who has brought the attention of my complaints up and down 9W to the appropriate person. I want to know why, number one. Nobody follows the administrative code in housing for commercial use in Inglewood Cliffs on 9W. And you could start with the Chiapi properties that are boarded up and against every ordinance that we have, including vacant buildings with gas, electric, and water. Trucks parked on grass. I have complained for three years straight. Gone to the building, taken pictures, shown the vacant vehicles back there that are still there after three years. He rents... He rents to... He rents to... In fact, I gave you the pictures, Mr. Mayor, and to the council people. You all got them. I want to know who in the council runs the buildings department?
We don't run departments. Our borough administrators and charges... And let me just interrupt you for a second if I may. Jamie, talk to Mr. Melphy. Arrange for a meeting with you, me, and him next week and have a complete list of every issue, every coded violation, everything. We need to go through this. And he's been here several times and we've processed this. So I want to know why things aren't getting resolved, okay?
No, no, he did.
Right, but I want to meet with Nick.
I don't understand you. I'm not gonna expose it.
No, but I want to make sure that things get done.
But I want to know why Mr. Melphy doesn't have the decency to call me when I gave Kathy the number, I gave the new buildings inspector the number, I gave another gentleman over there my number, and he doesn't even call. And I hear he's only there half an hour on a Friday. What are we paying this man?
I don't think that's correct. And I... I'll find out about communications, but most importantly, I want to have a list of everything and get involved here.
I believe that the people that we have, you have signs all over the town. They're putting them on buildings. They're putting them on windows. They're putting them all over the place.
I mean... You provided us with a list of the...
I gave the pictures.
You have that?
Yeah.
No, and what did you do with it?
I... I was not a part of the best of the day. He gave me a list. He said, I'll take care of all of them.
Okay. All right, so it's being dealt with.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying it's my belt book, but I want you to know, I mean, if we hire somebody to do maintenance in the town, he has to know what he's doing. And if the buildings department commercially... Now, I'm not talking of residential because I know residential is a disaster in itself. You have vacant buildings over here or grass that looks like the lower forty. I mean, dead, that nobody looks at. But nobody knows the ordinances. Nobody looks at the ordinance. Half the buildings on the south side, if you look from the steakhouse north, their roofs are coming off. It's horrible. The south branch looks better. Home looks better. I'm being honest. I'm not... I mean, it's something wrong when we're paying these people big money and they're doing nothing.
All right, Jamie, do you want to add anything? Do you want to add anything to what he's saying or...
No, no, I know.
No, let him finish.
I told him previously. And, uh, I was, um, maintenance inspector today. He said we'd be going out today and Friday. Um, he was hoping that the place would go through the permanent process. Right. But he doesn't allow it. He doesn't allow it.
Yeah, but it's not... You see, it's not the maintenance man. It's not the maintenance... Well, Melphy has to do that because he denied the permit.
Right.
And he also let the guy put up a sign on his building, which shouldn't have been there to begin with because Mr. Perino, Dr. Perino, in right, following the ordinances of Inglewood Cliffs, denied signs like that and denied lights like that. And he was right because he's following the law. And Melphy allows it because when I went there and I asked, and I didn't tell you who I asked, but I asked and opened... I said, who okayed that sign? Mr. Melphy, he's a zoning man. He's no longer the... He's no longer the buildings department. He's now zoning.
So Jamie, we have to have strict adherence to all those rules, okay?
And the same thing with the Chiapi property. When I went to ask, who's handling that? Is it the maintenance man? They told me, no. It's Mr. Melphy who's handling it. And he's handling it himself.
No, you're right. And I appreciate your comments that you're coming in and telling us.
If you were there for you people getting tapes like this if you want to go on the other end of it, because I think it's disgusting to even tape anyone. I mean, I find it wrong. But what it is, it is. But I think we should not lose sight of what's going on in our town.
We're handling both.
No.
We're handling both. We're handling both. And quite frankly, it's not an issue that I created. I didn't tape anybody. The chief taped people.
No, no, no.
But guess who has to deal with it? Guess who has to deal with it? I have to...
And anybody who does that is at all...
Right, but I have to deal with it, right?
Hundred percent.
Somebody came up here last week, I think it might be here tonight, last month, he sat down and he said, you know what? He's only got three months till he retires. Why don't you look the other way? And what are you guys talking about? We're a town of laws, a country of laws, and we're gonna follow our laws.
Well, anyway, those are my complaints. Those are mine. Our gains.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Francisiano Loirjard. I'm just gonna start from where you left off. You said we follow rules of law. And I wish that we would go after, as Tony mentioned, the people that have serious property maintenance issues in this town and make the town look like crap. We hired a person to do property maintenance. How many summons has been issued? Does anybody know, Mr. Administrator? Does anybody know? So we don't know. We'll find out means we don't know.
Well, we're gonna... Well, we...
What we'll do is, you know, with respect to what we're doing, we're agreeing with you to make now, tonight, our last thing. And what has been expected to maintenance in the town?
With all due respect, sir, I mean to be aggressive. But there's been... I've been here numerous times and I've seen many people mention it. It shouldn't be something that's new. It shouldn't be something that you should have to find out tonight because someone mentioned it. We hired somebody to do property maintenance. I have seen nothing. I have seen absolutely nothing. I've mentioned it from Sage Road, as Tony mentioned, and all the way down the other side of town. What have we done? And we're going after all different other things, rightfully so. But we should be just as aggressive as things that make our town look like crap as we do about people that are turning our town to crap.
So let's do this, Jamie. I'm gonna add a line item to the agenda for the regular meeting in October, property maintenance, and let's have a full report.
And I'd like to know, I mean, I'm gonna ask, I know, don't... Please tell me, don't... I don't mean it disrespectfully. Don't tell me to open it. I'm making a public request right now that one of you, whoever's in charge of construction, liaison to construction, whatever it is, the construction department, find out how many summons has been issued. We've been talking about the south end of town. The only thing we did now is we hear that open. You know what? Now the guy comes in and wants to improve the town, improve his property where he could build whatever he wants to build. Along those lines, Sage Road, maybe you can also find out. I went to the planning board. I have the plan from Sage Road, the new construction on the corner of Sage Road. There's supposed to be a drainage ditch in front of the building. I was referred to the engineer. The engineer told me that every inspection was done. Drive past the building. There's a berm and trees and grass. Where's the drainage ditch? What happened to it? Supposed to be a water retention pond. I'm not looking to really harass people about little things like this. But we have a water problem in my town. We've built four houses, at least in this town. I've had to put 2,000 gallon tanks on our property. If there's supposed to be a drainage retention pond, how come there's no drainage retention pond? Look at the plans. It's on page four. I brought it to the attention upstairs at the building department. I came here to the planning board and the man that I spoke to looked at me like he didn't know what I was talking about. I've talked to the borough engineer who said every plan was approved. Where's the retention pond? Now it looks like they're moving in. Plus, I've mentioned how terrible the whole neighborhood. ICC NBC on the other corner. When they do their yard, they blow everything into the... Into that area where I joked last time. Should I not maintain the front of my property? It's their property. They're not good neighbors. So maybe we could find out about that too. Because I'm gonna ask Mr. Perino before we leave tonight, what happened to that? Because I was there a few months ago and the only thing that I've seen is now they're ready to move in.
Okay, all good points. Jamie, can you take a look at that? Thank you.
Second of all, so another point. I believe that Councilwoman McMarlowe mentioned that there's only one lawsuit pending. And that has to do with Councilwoman Park.
After her.
After her.
After her.
After her.
So were there any other lawsuits pending? I mean, so...
Yeah.
A humorous lawsuit.
There are.
Right?
There are.
And with all due respect to everybody, I was the councilman. If I didn't get emails, I would sue you. To be perfectly honest with you. But I mean, it just seems...
But she got her emails.
Okay, I'm just... I don't know the whole totality of it, but I mean, I was here and just saying. With regard to the tape, I don't necessarily... I don't even say necessarily. I don't agree with the things that are said on the tape, but for totality of understanding, does that whole tape seem to be able to be released with just the three minutes that we got to listen to?
The whole tape is open game.
And I would respectfully request that you either play the whole tape or that you get us a transcript of the tape. Because I don't think it's fair to anybody to take snippets of a tape. And I don't mean it disrespectfully, but yes, snippets. If there's 140 tapes, you're taking three minutes.
That one is a nine-minute long tape.
You heard the entire segment within that tape. You didn't hear the whole tape. You heard the entire segment uninterrupted.
But my point being, and once again, I'm not gonna keep saying with all due respect, I'm trying to be respectful to everyone. I don't necessarily like getting portions of things where we can't hear the whole thing and put it into perspective. It's very easy... Once again, I don't mean it in any particular way, but it's very easy to twist something when you play just... And I'm not saying you're doing that, but for us as the public to understand the totality of the tape...
It's a fair point.
Please release the whole tape.
I, you know, I would do nothing less than put it up on the borough websites. If you want to listen to it while you're running or whatever, you can listen to it. But there's some attorney-client privilege matters within that do have to get excised out of it. But there's some attorney-client privilege matters within that do have to get excised out of it. But, you know, we, we have, not in that one, but, but you know, just so everybody recognizes, we have a zero tolerance policy in this borough for workplace violence or workplace threats, and the last place you would think that such a threat would emanate from would be from the police department. And then within the police department, the last place you would think that a threat would emanate from would be from the chief of the police department. So we're dealing with a lot right now, Mr. Lusiano, and I hope you appreciate this, because you have no idea what else is in those tapes, which will make your head spin and make you all wonder about what, what is going on in this town, and why we're paying people to hurt us, which is what it comes down to.
Goes right back to my point, I think if you're going through, it would be something on a tape, release the entire tape. In all honesty, I think half of it sounds like garbage, you couldn't even really hear what I'm saying, but the points that you were trying to make came through loud and clear. But I think that it's not fair to Councilwoman McMorris, it's not fair to the chief, it's not fair to the citizens of this town to only take a portion of a tape and play it.
We have zero tolerance, what we heard is enough.
Well, it might be enough for you, Mayor, with all due respect, but it's not enough for me.
Want to play it all? Play it all?
Point about that, excuse me, excuse me.
Now, you should gavel your gavel, because when people talk in the audience, you should not allow that when I'm speaking. Okay, regardless of who it is.
All right, but- Just, just, just to make clear, no one up here played that tape, a citizen played that portion of the tape.
A councilwoman played that tape.
Right.
And you committed it to be played, and all I'm saying is, it's-
Sir, sir, you make a very good point about portions of tape, and when these things become overbowl, we are going to have to deal with that, because certain sections are in fact confidential, okay? But when we say zero tolerance, that's in our employee manual, it doesn't matter anywhere what the circumstances were, it only matters whether or not the statement containing a threat was made, it's called zero tolerance policy. Many towns have them, and many employees get disciplined for a joke. "Oh, I'd like to kill you, DPW guys." Sorry, you can't do it in the workplace, it's called zero tolerance. So regardless of the whole conversation, which was apparently like, something like nine minutes, the statement is there, and it comes from one person.
We, we all heard that statement.
I think you're missing my whole point.
Well, you want to know the circumstance.
Please let me finish. I don't want to know the circumstances, I want to hear the whole tape. I understand zero tolerance, I understand what it means, I understand what your obligation has to come off with the zero tolerance policy has to deal with.
Thank you, I'm glad you understand.
What, what you're not seeming to understand is my point, that we should not allow just a portion, and I understand what you mean with confidentiality, has to be removed, then you know what you should have done? You shouldn't allow the tape to play. Okay, if you don't, if you're not ready to, to release the whole tape, then you shouldn't-
Mr. Lusiano, we weren't, we weren't releasing it, the citizen did, just like the citizen before her. Hold on a second, no, hold on, let me, let me, the citizen, let me finish. Hold on, let me, let me just say this, everybody, listen to this. We let a lot go here, all right? If Mr. De Gregorio wants to come in here and insult me, he can do so, it's his right to insult me, okay? He can do it, he's wrong, I find it abhorrent, you know, he's defining himself as what kind of human being he is, okay? But I have to permit it, and I do, okay? Now, the one thing that you would notice is that Mr. De Gregorio came up here, and he did not try to defend those snippets, as you call them, of what the chief said. In fact, none of the chief supporters back here have come up and sat down by you and even tried to attempt rationalize, justify, explain, no one's going to either, I guarantee it. And if they do, I won't give you-
I mean, don't, 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 I'm not here defending it, I'm just saying-
Well, you called him, it wasn't fair to him, what she did, and it was fair.
Listen, it's not fair, I should have maybe said, it's not fair to everyone. Whoever, whatever side you're on, to me, in my opinion, it is not fair, and I don't think it's, it's fair to the public, because, and you don't like the word snippet, but when you take portions of something without taking it in totality, because, and I'm not defending anything that was said, but I could have a conversation with this gentleman right here, and if we have a five-minute conversation, I don't know any way, I'm not, I just use you as an example. I could find possibly a 30-second snippet of something that doesn't make it color, and I'm not, it has nothing to do with the tape that was played today. I'm saying in general, and I see councilpeople agreeing with me on both sides, that, you know what? For us to get an understanding of the full conversation, I don't agree with what was said, I think it's totally inappropriate, especially for a police officer, especially for a chief of police. Can I ever say in my life that I said I wanted to kill someone? Probably not, I mean, you can't say that, I think this time's in heated discussions, especially when you think you're having a private conversation, even though he, he has to know the tape was on, it's not a private conversation, but, so I think to take it in totality, and I'm not trying to say that, I'm not trying to defend it or say that it was right, or, I'm just saying that for us to have a better understanding of the totality of it, you said before, at the beginning of the tape, you're saying test one, two, three, what, what about the other six minutes of the tape?
Let, let, let's agree on this, I agree with you. In fact, when I found out about these recordings, I said, let's let them all out, I want them to be public, I want transparency, because only when you have transparency, and of course, you take the privilege items out and the employee sensitive information out, but only when you have that full transparency, you can reconcile the past, and you can move forward with whoever's still there, standing at the end. That, that's all we're going to do, other people have done this, and we can do it, okay?
Well, you mentioned disciplinary charges that you had brought up with regard to stolen tape. It's on the agenda, there's something in you mentioned about disciplinary issues. One of the disciplinary issues, since you already said it had one had to do with the stolen tape, it seems as though you're hiring a hearing officer.
The tape, the recorder is not part of the hearing officer scenario, that's just a criminal charge working its way through the courts.
That's something on the agenda tonight.
You want to answer that?
Yeah.
Will the people rise, and did they say to have an opening, to release the information as to what the disciplinary charges are that are pending? No to everything?
Almost no to everything. I did announce before, maybe you weren't here, that this was going to be a general discussion about the procedures surrounding the disciplinary hearings, disciplinary charges that have been filed, the persons are not identified, we did not rice, it is a deliberative consultative and advisory attorney-client closed session that I had with each of the members of the council. So there's no need for rice, we weren't discussing individual employees or their individual employment rights, which is what rice requires, okay? So, that's number one. Number two, what did you ask, what else did you ask? Hearing officer, you asked me to, hearing officer, we're looking for a hearing officer to handle disciplinary matters.
Just in a general sense, anything that comes up.
Anything that comes up, it could be police, it could be, and we happen to be dealing with mammoth issues with respect to the tapes.
And are we going to attack the attorney before we decide what disciplinary matters they're going to hear, or are they going to bill us only after? It's determined that they're going to be referred disciplinary charges to them?
After.
After.
After, the charges are, the charges are already served. And by the way, just so everybody recognizes where we are in terms of what's happened in the last week, you know, we had the Burton County Sheriff make racist comments on tape, and the prosecutor, attorney general, the governor dealt with that expeditiously as they should, and I don't agree with this governor a lot of things, but I commend him for removing that hatred. We have a very similar situation here, we have our police officers with, with the chief making anti-Asian comments, anti-women comments, and, and the attorney general, the prosecutor, are all aware of this, but they haven't done anything yet, so if, if they listen to this, and, and I think they should, and I've contacted them, they, they should actually take action and deal with this, because this is a hatred in our, in our society, in our community. And, and somebody was ripping on Lee, being a bad neighbor, but if you're ripping on your, your fellow neighbors because of their ethnicity, or because of their gender, or other things, then you're really a bad neighbor, and you're actually a bad police chief if you're doing that as, as well, and you should really rethink your career path.
What if they're dead? So, um, okay, um-
We're, we're dealing with many, we're dealing with many serious issues right now, and we can't, we're not discussing, we're not releasing the disciplinary charges, you asked about that, they're not being released.
Property maintenance?
And the, the tapes, I told the mayor, when the tapes are dealt with, and I'll tell everyone on Oprah, we're not re, ready to do it yet, because there are 120 tapes, and there are certain portions that are designated, and it may be a special technical associate to do it, because the borough clerk is not going to do it, no one on this day is going to snippet anything, except the portions of the tapes designated confidential, they're not operable. The other ones will have to be reviewed to make sure they're confidential in the lawsuit, do you understand? Those A conversations remain confidential in the lawsuit. All the rest of them are potentially operable, but please don't all run and file Oprahs again. We have some technical difficulties.
I haven't filed any Oprahs with the borough.
Okay, but just, you know, the clerk and I need to work things out, and we need to hire an expert.
It's awful what you're saying, I feel we're being controlled by the federal court, is that not correct?
Uh, the discovery confidentiality order is in the federal court.
Okay, and the reason why there is an order, okay, you ready for this?
I'm ready.
Because when people do things they shouldn't do, and then other people find out about it, the first thing they want to do is seal it all, so that people out here can't hear it, right? That's what they do. So I ordered the chief to release them, because I'm, you know, he's supposed to be listening to me, but he doesn't, and, hold on, and I also, I also asked him to release them, but he won't. And I asked the PBA, I said, you know, there are good officers being hurt by this, because we don't know who, who flew in these tapes, you should want them released as well.
Property maintenance?
Wait, I want to tell the mayor this, and the public, in public, I do not mean the tapes should be posted on the borough website.
And you said that before, but yeah, sorry.
And, you know, there is, there is a procedure, it's called Oprah, for things that are operable, we have other concerns than just what the federal court says. The federal court has their litigation going on, and they've now greatly lifted what was attempted to be done by holding all these tapes back to a, you know, a miniscule part of the 120. But I do not agree that they should go on the borough website, we have other concerns that the court does.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll find a way. We'll find a way to have the public have access.
Property maintenance, please, I want to know about property maintenance, we hired somebody, we should be at least-
We got that, we got that.
You don't have to hire me, I'm probably going to write complaints right now.
But now you're repeating yourself, we, we actually did all that.
I want to make sure you understand, I want to know about property maintenance, I want to know about Sage Road.
We did all that, got it.
We'll do it.
Got it, just like we did it, by the way, we, we, Mr. Lusiano, we did fix the crosswalk on Johnson, I don't know if you noticed, but the sign was-
The sign was available until eight weeks prior now.
It took a while, government doesn't move that quickly, but I, from my order to the moving, it took a little while, the gate is up, and-
So we haven't moved the handicap.
Well, the handicap, which Jamie's working on, is supposed to be moved up to the children's playground, so it's on a level field, so we're thinking it through. All right, thank you.
Good time.
I'm just starting today, it's because of their community residents, the spot we have, we have a right, is there under water?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, I do. Point of order, lady?
Yeah.
Point of order, performance of color speaks. Uh, Mr. Lusiano? Mr. Lusiano? Hi, I just wanted to wait until, until you were completed, thank you for your comments. I just want to let you know, I thought that, it was, it's a nine-minute tape, there was a lot of walking, and going upstairs, and walking into the building, and I thought, and I apologize if it came across as anything else, I thought to not bore everyone with that walking between buildings, and walking up the stairs, and whistling, and I thought that would have been a waste of everybody's time, but I can understand what you're saying, seeing it start there, but that's the reason it started there, I have no problem playing the whole nine minutes, I'm letting you hear everybody just walking and whistling, number one. Number two, that tape is allowed to be released. I, I had that checked, I just want that to be put on the record, I am allowed to give it to any third party. That tape, that tape, number 100, is allowed for me to give it to any third party. I just found out about that, and the public has a right to know.
I'm putting that on record, as a citizen, I know that there's a website out there that says release the tape, but on that, the whole thing on that.
Well, that tape, yeah.
You don't have to worry about it.
Thank you for the idea.
Hi, Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. I have to tell you something, this, this whole thing about the tapes really has me worried, and I want to first say that I respect the police department. There are wonderful men and women walking out there, giving service to us, and putting their lives on the line for us, but for us to sit here, you know, and say that blanket, if you're a police officer, you're perfect, nobody is perfect, there is good and bad in every profession that you can think of, attorneys, doctors, uh, whatever, maintenance men, law, whoever it is, there, there are good and bad in everything, and for people to come up here and say that we should just blindly accept that every single person that works on Angle Eclipse in the capacity of a police officer is perfect. What I heard on that tape, I have to tell you something, if that were me, I would have started a lawsuit against that person immediately, and I would probably hire somebody to protect me. How can you, these people out here, new people out there, even consider giving somebody a pass on saying, "What a bitch, people are getting fired for less than that." What is, what is wrong with this town? We are not Shangri-La here, that the fact is that we have good people and bad people in this town. And I don't really care what they're doing in the background, because I don't care. Uh, what I want to say is, I want to, I want to speak directly to you Democrats up there, please, you fought for stigma, Gloria, you wore a T-shirt that said stigma. You don't have a problem with a woman being called a bitch, and saying, "I wish I could kill her"? What is wrong with you people? It's not in our party.
That's nothing to do with stigma.
It doesn't?
You don't get the whole concept.
Well, why don't you tell me the concept?
I did, I tried to explain to you.
No, no, you didn't, you didn't say a word about stigma. What is stigma? Tell me what stigma is to you.
Stigma free is about mental illness, and we want people that have the problem to be able to come out and get help, okay? And our mayor, you know, we had to, our town had to be different, 69 towns out of the 70.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt you, Gloria, because you know what? No, 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 I'm going to interrupt you, because I, I heard, I heard what you said.
So you heard what I said before?
I, no, no, I'm, I'm listening to you, what you're saying now. What I want to say about stigma free is that I have no clue what stigma free is, as most people out there you don't, and I'm going to tell you why. I tried Googling stigma free, do you know what? All they talk about, this town has stigma free, and that town, what is stigma free? Where's the paperwork? I want to read stigma free, and if the mayor yourself, that he needed to remove the criminality of it, shame on you for not wanting to remove the criminality, okay? Shame on you, that's disgusting.
Okay.
And I think that something, yeah, clearly you feel that you know it all, and nobody else.
Calling somebody a bitch has nothing to do with stigma free.
Is it okay? Is it okay?
No, I'm not saying that it's okay, I'm saying it has nothing to do with stigma.
What about, she's breaking my balls, is that okay for you, Gloria?
That's not stigma free.
Is it okay? Is that statement okay to be said about a woman? I'm asking you directly.
I'm responding to Mrs. Valari's question about stigma free.
Miss O, is it right for a man to say that about a woman? I'm asking you now.
Um, you know what, um-
Oh, wow!
It's a yes or no. It's a yes or no.
I didn't, you didn't even give me an opportunity to answer, and, oh, wow! So you already have an opinion of my-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, you know what, you're taking everything out of context, as Mr. Lusiano had mentioned before. I'd like to listen to the tape myself, and I will give you an answer when I do.
But it was a general question, it was a general question, is it okay for a man to say that about a woman, yes or no?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Wow. This is, this is, do you belong to the Me Too media? Because, boy, what you just said is totally against everything about women, shame on you. You can't answer, you can't, no, 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 Gloria, because you're not willing to commit to the answer, not because you don't want to answer, if, if you really believe that women should not be treated poorly in the workplace, in government, that men shouldn't, they should not demean women, they should not kill the women, they should not make rude jokes, well, then you know what? Then you're not agreeing with that concept, that women should- Gloria, I would like to hear all the tapes, and by the way, if you do have a stigma-free protocol, please just give it to me, because I can't find it anywhere. And I, I, I just, I just feel, I just feel that I can't believe what's going on right now. We have Mr. De Gregorio come up here and talk about stupidity, in my opinion, in my opinion, stupidity, when we are facing such serious issues in this town. What is wrong with you people? How can you continue to protect protocol instead of addressing what the true issues are? My taxes have gone up tremendously underneath the previous administration. Your taxes have gone up tremendously. Not under this, guys, I'm sorry. I will...
You didn't get a tax bill?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. But you know what? I also received the ones from the previous administrations, where my taxes were going up and having nothing, having nothing.
Did it go up or down this year? It's a question.
It went up.
Okay.
All right. And they were, so what do you, so what do you, so what do you, what? Because of all the fake lawsuits?
You complain about the taxes that, you know, went up before...
Because of all the fake lawsuits. Because, because, because why are our taxes going up, Gloria? Fake lawsuits. Why are our taxes up? You tell me why our taxes are going up.
You are so completely biased, and, you know...
Oh, wow, okay. Coming from you, coming from you...
All right, let's, let's just, uh...
What I want to say is, is that I want to hear these tapes, all of them, all of them.
Right now...
There are, I understand, I understand, Gloria, I understand. But if that is just the taste of what these tapes are about, it scares me to think of is on those tapes. And it scares me that we, there are people defending, defending the person who did that. I wouldn't want to be taped, Gloria, I don't think you want to be taped, and I think it's a shame that the chief of police of this town went around taping employees, people who were walking in, and if you're okay with that, then you need to rethink why you're sitting up there. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
When I listen to that tape that Mrs. McMarlow played, I think of terrible things. The fact that the chief of police, who is carrying a gun, and carries a gun twenty-four hours a day, supposedly to protect and serve the Borough of Engle Cliffs, threatened, basically, and say he would like to kill a sitting councilwoman. That's outrageous, and all of you, Ed, Ellen, and Gloria, should be upset with that. Just because if the situation was reversed, and that statement was made about one of you, you would not want it. You would not want to feel unsafe in your own space, in your car, on your front yard, walking down the street, crossing the street. You could have to be afraid that you're gonna be a statistic. I'm sure Mrs. McMarlow has uneasiness after hearing that, okay? Somebody threatening and saying they'd like to kill you, and then talking about, uh, but I can't, talking about the Shawshank Redemption with the prisons. I mean, apparently, he gave this considerable thought. And every day, we hear of people in Maryland, and Ohio, and Illinois, all the different places, different types of businesses, where they go into their workplace and start shooting and killing people, okay? And that's people that have never said it. Here you have somebody that said it, okay? And he walks into the tax office, I mean, I can hear, hello Paul, well, there's only one Paul in the borough hall, okay, we know who that Paul is, and there's a woman there, that's Janice Romano, okay? And this conversation is going on between Janice Romano, the chief, and Paul Duffy. That's outrageous, that's totally outrageous. He said hello Paul when he walked in the room. He did, he said hello Paul. Okay, so that's, that's, that's where he was. It should be a trial, okay? And, and, and this should not be acceptable behavior for anyone, all right? And in view of all the things that are going on in this country, with people, shooting people in workplaces, okay, to have those types of comments made in a workplace by the chief of police, who's carrying a gun, is totally unacceptable, and I hope something is done about it. Thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand before, but I'll get you next.
Lauren Eastwood, four Willow Drive. We currently have the tapes, and the tape is extremely disturbing. Um, the police chief is obligated to afford everyone in this community protection. Um, and the fact that he feels free on a tape in front of other borough employees to, uh, display such hostility to a resident he is obligated to protect raises, in my mind, substantial questions about his ability to fulfill his job, and to protect everyone in town on an equal basis, and to treat everyone fairly. And in my opinion, um, his employment needs to be reviewed. Um, I note that we are at this point because there have been a lot of red flags that have been ignored. There's a red flag that goes back to the early nineteen nineties. Shawn, S-H-A-W-N Halloman, H-O-L-L-O-M-A-N, versus the Borough of Engle Cliffs. It was a lawsuit involving several of our police officers, including Lieutenant Sergeant Chaffey, uh, which made some pretty disturbing allegations. Apparently, nothing was done about the allegations then, but the plaintiff, a convicted felon, who was in prison with a tiny suit, was paid a fairly substantial amount of money. It should have been a red flag.
What were the facts of that?
I, my understanding, and I have to read it again, is that the plaintiff was strip-searched on the side of a road. The plaintiff was an African-American. There were further lawsuits, the Agresta lawsuit, which sounds an awful lot like the gentleman with the nine, eight and nine-year-old child said about, um, someone putting their hand on their gun while intimidating people. Apparently, nothing was done about that. Um, there was another lawsuit filed by a former police officer, which makes, um, some very disturbing allegations, including about, um, a drunken assault. Um, that was an unusual lawsuit, because it's the only one that I'm aware of where there was no confidentiality order. Um, as a result, people could go to the civil case room and read the pleadings, and get copies of them. And I did. Among the, um, are you bored, Ellen? Um, among the, uh, pleadings... Um, among the, um, documents that were in the civil case room was a reprimand of a member of the chief's family, and deposition testimony, saying that the chief had contacted the person who had made the complaint against this member of his family. Apparently, no one thought that the fact that he was talking to a witness and a complaint in, in a matter involving one of his family members, uh, was something they needed to deal with. And it goes on and on, you know the recent lawsuits. They're all red flags, but apparently, nothing was done. And now we have a hundred and twenty tapes. Um, and of the a hundred and twenty-one tapes, the portion of the one tape that has been made public so far is extremely disturbing. Uh, we have had this year a number of attempts to hire a hearing officer to deal with this complaint. Now, this council has an obligation to fulfill its duties, uh, even if it hurts your political allies or friends, um, regardless of the consequences. You personally, you have to do your job. And I'm going to close by once again reading Section B of official misconduct. A public servant is guilty of official misconduct when he knowingly refrains from performing a duty which is imposed upon him by law, or is clearly inherent in the nature of his
Thank you, so, you know, I, I recognize that, um, we have a problem, and we're dealing with it, and, and many people say, if you think you have a problem, you have a big problem. I think we have a big problem. Yes, I'm sorry, Ross, she had her hand up earlier.
Hello, this is my first time at the borough, um, not a pretty sight. Name, name and address. Esther, three fifty-six Castle Drive. I'm not a politician, I hate talking in public, but I couldn't just sit there and just listen to you guys, and to the public, and just quiet. I'm a mother, I'm not a politician. I have an autistic child, and this town is, has stigma. This is the only town that's not stigma free. I cannot take my child to any rec that you guys have programs, because how is it gonna be accepted in our town? It's not.
Of course it will.
No.
Yes, in fact, in fact, there was somebody...
I have parents, I have friends, that send their own child that's not in special ed, and they tell me that they...
When I coached soccer here, for many years, we had an autistic child on the field, and the child's mother was on the field with that child for practices and for games, and we always accommodated, and if it's not happening now, I will make sure it is happening.
And, you know, I just want to try and, thank you so much for coming and bringing this up. I just, and I don't want to mention the mother's name, but I had a parent call me this morning. Jamie knows, because I reached out to him. She has an autistic son, and she called me up this morning, and she asked me about soccer, and she said she wanted to have him start to acclimate, and she didn't know how. And I worked with her this morning, and giving her ideas, putting her in contact with, uh, somebody from USA Academy, working with her to help her autistic child, because we absolutely want to, so please, just call us, and we'll, we will work with you. This is the first I'm hearing from you, but we, we do hear from parents other, other towns, they're, they're, you know, they are very, they have programs that are very open to special ed kids. We are the only town that I researched, we are the only town. You know, and for you, Mr. Mayor, to say that, the recordings have all, like, um, they're dimin, diminishing, dimin, dimin... Diminishing. Dimin, like, women, and, what about, you know, what about stigma free? That's part of it. Being a stigma-free town, it's beneath that. So I don't know why our town is not stigma free. We are.
We are, we are, we absolutely are. We passed a resolution, and, and in fact, I wish you had called me when this issue arose, rather than have to wait until today to say this. I'm always available to talk to people, our residents call me with problems like this. We would have dealt with it instantly, okay?
Call me about rec for any help you need with that.
You know, you guys don't understand, because you guys are not in my suit, you guys are not in a parent, a parent who has an autistic kid, you know?
I have a relative that had one, and he's now twenty-five years old.
I coached an autistic child on my soccer teams in this town, so, and maybe they didn't tell you that, because you keep looking over there, but, um...
But please call...
I actually did, I actually did.
We want to help you with anything you need to do.
I just had to, I just had to say what I...
I'm not sure what we can do, though, to help you, because you can't...
Because you guys have to make it right, you have to make it out there, you know? You can't just say, oh, I, I coached a child that is, you know, you have to...
But you came here and you stated a problem, and then I stated it, and I stated a solution for your problem, and, and you're getting upset with me, but we're really trying to...
I'm not getting upset, I'm just saying what's on my mind.
But we're really trying, we will do this. Please, let us...
Well, we'll say, thank you for bringing that up, and please call me, my, my number's on the website, okay? I mean that.
I, I heard something there, I'm gonna ignore it, I'm gonna call on you, Mr. Perrino. Evening, American Council, not sure which one to work this show, I'll speak into both of them. Um, a couple of quick things...
It's like all-time radio, you get two microphones.
Question, feel like a newscaster here.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Russell Perrino, two twenty third Avenue Avenue. Just a procedural question. Uh, tonight, are you planning on, on voting on appointing a hearing officer? Is that something that's gonna be coming, uh, this evening?
Yes.
Okay. If that's the case, then I just want to make a quick, a quick statement. You know, I think what we heard here tonight is not gray, it's black and white. And the fact that a member of our police department, in this case, the police chief, said the words he said, it's black and it's white, and I think each member of this council has heard enough, unless you don't believe the voice is the chief's, which I think all of us can assume, or I won't say assume, I know from the voice that it is. Um, I can't see how this is gray, I just don't see it. And anyone who chooses not to support a motion to appoint a hearing officer, whether it's about this specifically, or about other things as well, too, is going to say something. You have to make the call. I'm saying that to everybody. You can't sit back and say, I want to hear more, I want to hear the rest of it, the words were said, and to me, it's, it's crystal clear, but...
Mr. De Gregorio, you had your, you had your thirty minutes at the microphone, so you're, you're, you're out of order, you're unkind, you're being disrespectful. Practice what you preach.
I'm not gonna respond to the noise in the back, because it's coming from, we know where it's coming from.
Mr. De Gregorio...
Please.
If, if it's attention that you seek, you've had enough for this evening?
No, no, Mary, just please, just...
Go ahead. For, for the people at home who can't see behind the, the video screen, Mr. De Gregorio, who spent thirty minutes at the microphone, feels that he has to erupt, and just continue heckling one of our residents here, who's also the chairman of our planning board. Mr. Perrino, I apologize. Thank you.
Why don't you just leave?
Mary, Mary, shut up. I mean, you know, because you know what? They're being rude, let them be rude, and the public is seeing it. It's enough.
I need everybody to be silent, including you, Mr. De Gregorio. And if you can't do that, then maybe you should leave, it's up to you if you leave or not. Yes, Mr. Perrino?
I'll try once more. So, so, I've heard enough to know that a member of this council was threatened. It's, it's, it's enough there that it's black and white, and I, I suggest that each member of this council make their statement, that either they support the chief, or they support the borough and their residents, and the council president here. There's no in-between. You can't back up and say, I want to hear more, I want to hear it again, there's a...
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll leave my comments for that ordinance until then.
Okay, thank you. And anyone feels that they have to have a phone conversation on their cellphone while we're in session here, it'd be very respectful and kind if you would just go outside and conduct your conversation, because that was rude. Mr. Perino was speaking. You owe him an apology. Thank you. I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Penny Rasul, 44 Birch Street. That portion of the tape that I heard was very disturbing. It's very disturbing that it's coming from someone who, whose position I have, I hold in very high regard, and to make comments about a woman, council president, a resident of the town. Doesn't matter, council people, we're all residents of this town, and for any one of us to be on that end of a conversation is not good at all. It is so disrespectful. It's so frightening, for the mere reason that this person does have a gun. And, I don't know, would he get very, very angry one day and start shooting? I don't know. But I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want any of you to be on, on the other end of this conversation, remarks being made to any of the gentlemen, or any of the women, in a public building by the police chief. It's just not right.
Anybody else? Yes.
Susan Consalvo, 150 Charlotte Place. Ah, yes, most of us feel, it's appalling that the chief of police, who is on taxpayer dollars, and supposedly representing all citizens, deals with liberty to threaten murder. He who represents law enforcement, what does that say about him and his character? I want those tapes released. I want to know what else is happening behind the scenes, because you better believe, he had a very dubious motive in taping everyone. It's not healthy, it's dirty, and it's undermining. And those tapes better be released. It's disgraceful.
Well, the iceberg is a lot bigger than the tip, so I guarantee you, you'll be shocked. Anybody else? Have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's deal with Resolution 18-197. Can the Borough Attorney, please, read the resolution as you want it, and have somebody leave it in?
Madam Clerk.
I did give you...
Oh, sorry. I know you had it, okay.
I did give you...
18-197. One minute hearing officer. We need a motion to appoint Alan Roth to handle disciplinary matters as assigned by the Borough Administrator, and this will be $160 per hour.
So move. Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
I'm going to refuse.
Ann Park?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
Mayor, it's three noes, two yeses, and one refusal.
Okay. So, once again, you guys have done a great job protecting hatred. Ed, Alan, Gloria, you protected hatred tonight?
Thank you.
And I'm sure the people who you answer to will appreciate that.
Councilmembers, I will be requesting that the mayor put the hearing officer appointments on the agenda for next, next week's special meeting on October 4th. One second, please. If you have a suggested hearing officer, please feel free to have someone send me their resume, so that the Borough Administrator and I can review.
And for the record, Councilwoman Ellen Park was advised that she has a conflict not to vote on anything regarding me. She's violated the local government ethics board law, and I will be notifying the board that she voted and was conflicted.
Okay. And, no.
Because, because I, excuse me, I brought it up at the last public meeting.
Okay, all right.
I brought it up at the last public meeting.
All right, here's the takeaway for the public. We are going to have these...
And you know it.
Let me have a shot. The takeaway for the public, people smiling in the back, we are going to have these hearings, and I assure you that we will have them.
And according to Mayor, it's kind of knowledge, Ellen Park has two, has a one lawsuit against me, and she's attempting to sue again for money. So, she has a complete conflict. It's public, I mean, people know she has a lawsuit against me. So, she should not have voted at all. She's got a conflict, and she voted.
All right. Let's do the next thing. Ordinance 2018-18-14, an ordinance establishing mandatory inclusion of affordable housing through use of percentage set asides. This is a public hearing.
We need a motion to open, please.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Does anyone from the public who wishes to only speak on ordinance 2018-14, an ordinance establishing mandatory inclusion of affordable housing through use of percentage set asides, please raise your hand, same rules as before. Anybody wishing to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Russell Perino, 220 Fairview Avenue. Just a quick comment. I support the, the adoption of this ordinance. There's been some comments made, I guess it was the last public meeting, that there's something nefarious and behind the scenes going on here. This is a borough-wide ordinance that the planning board indeed looked at as well, too. And we voted to send it back to you, in affirmation that we agree with the contents of it. It's contained in most fair share housing, trying to think of the word, the plans that are filed in different municipalities. Many times, it's part of that document, and in our town, I'm sure it would be as well, too, be repeated. It's just something that I think is a, is a, it's an air of protection for the Borough, and nothing should be assumed that it's nefarious in any way. I'm not quite sure why those statements were made. So, I urge the governing body to approve it, and let's get it behind us, and it's a very small piece in a very big puzzle, but it should be a no-brainer, and I hope everybody realizes that it's nothing but protection for the Borough. Thank you.
Folks, this is Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you all just be quiet when somebody is speaking? Up here, it'd be very respectful if you did that, and it was disrespectful what just happened. And Mr. De Gregorio, you're completely turned around having a conversation with Mr. Barry. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Please, don't yell.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Tony Morfes, 26th Charlie Ward, Chris. By passing this, that means anybody that has a one-family or two-family house, that's what I want to know.
No. Only applies to five-woman...
Yes, David De Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. I looked for the paper copy of this ordinance, but there were none back there, so I very respectfully asked that enough copies are made, maybe even a few extra.
There were copies. I think you came late.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't want to take everyone's time to read through here. Could you explain to me in a nutshell what the ordinance exactly is?
So, Councilwoman McMorro has been our liaison for COA, dealing with all COA matters and reporting back to us, and I thank her for giving...
Mr. De Gregorio, I hope you can respect the fact that we are in litigation. I know that you're aware of it, because I heard you yell the word Normandy at least 17 times while you were sitting back there.
Less than that.
Well, it was a lot. I was sitting across from you. So, I will read what we are allowed to talk about, and that's it. That's all we're going to say, because we are in litigation.
Sure.
Because, as you know, we do have our adversary sitting right there behind Ms. Sabari and Ms. Geiger, with the white shirt from Lady Potabano. Hi.
Oh, is she here, representative of Normandy? Oh, okay. Hey, how are you?
Okay. Do you have anything else to add?
No. I'm gonna, okay.
Just being humble.
What does the, okay, what, okay, what does the ordinance do? The ordinance does not give any developer any right to an increased density. It does not give any developer any right to use a variance to permit the developer to develop its site as a multifamily or attached single-family use. However, the ordinance does make clear that if any developer secured such a zoning change, or a change in use, a percentage of the units must be reserved for low and moderate income households. 15% if the affordable units are for rent, and 20% if the affordable units are for sale. Why do we need this ordinance? The ordinance is a protective measure. If a developer secured the right to develop the site with five or more multifamily or attached single-family units, the Borough would incur a responsibility for every five units permitted. This ordinance ensures that under that scenario, we will capture one affordable unit for every five units constructed. The ordinance demonstrates that we are taking our responsibilities very seriously. At every turn, Sylvan accuses the Borough of bad faith, for failing to take any action to generate affordable housing. This measure shows that we are taking precautionary measures, putting the Borough in our most favorable light. And I'm very sorry, I cannot answer any other questions. We are in litigation, and the gentleman in the back is waiting, you know, salivating actually, for every word that we said.
Would you consider this ordinance reactionary, or proactive?
I can't, I, I...
That's a question that we're not asking.
I can't just answer. We can, I apologize. When, when the time is that we can, I will be more than happy to...
So, I guess reaction to certain things that have happened. I mean, it certainly doesn't seem...
I'm not gonna...
If I can ask you another...
I'm not gonna, yeah, we're not...
You're not an expert.
Just so you know, just so this actually sinks in, we are not answering questions.
Right, we cannot. I just, I just, yeah.
No, you don't have to answer this. If you can't answer, then you don't have to...
And I thought, and I would just like to bring to your attention, if you say things to, the gentleman in the back might could take your words and possibly use them against the Borough as well, and harm the Borough as well.
As a resident, I'll take that...
They can do any...
Certainly.
You're taking a risk?
Yeah, because I think that it would be really cool thing if we would invite, now, listen, I will say that I certainly, if I were the head of the planning board, I might have made the same mistake that Mr. Perino...
We're talking about the ordinance only. This is about the set aside ordinance.
All right, the ordinance. But certainly, I think that we really need to reach out to this company.
You're out of bounds.
We can't, we can't talk about that stuff. We just can't.
Because public hearing on an ordinance is limited. I've said this before. You can only talk about the ordinance.
The ordinance, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the ordinance, though...
It's a, it's a good way to stop the stream of consciousness and just focus.
I'm focusing. That's fine. What is a builder's remedy? Can you describe that?
I cannot, Mr. De Gregorio. You know, when the meeting's over, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Because, will this ordinance make any difference?
I, I cannot, I'm so sorry. I just, I just, I cannot comment any further. This is all I can say.
Certainly...
David.
Please.
It's enough.
Please.
Enough? Okay.
You're...
If you have any questions after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
David, really, it's enough.
Well, I just would like to, maybe at this point, take an opportunity to say that I think the folks from Normandy should, we should invite them back, and take them out for a nice dinner, and, and, and talk to them, and, and, you know. Well, if it, if it would prevent, if it would prevent 600 potential units and the taxes going up...
I have no comment. Is there anyone else in the public? Anybody else in the public?
Mr. De Gregorio, if you have any questions after the meeting, feel free to talk to me.
Okay, you know, and I, I will, if I can add one more thing. If I...
Don't let them yell. Okay, okay, sir. Sir! David, please.
No, I just wanted to say, if I make a mistake, or if I...
It's not about the ordinance. You're done. You're done.
No, I certainly would have female enough to apologize.
You're done. You're done.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street, Anglewood Place. I spoke at the planning board against adoption of this ordinance, because I believe the Borough is remiss in setting up a plan and alerting the residents as to what your plan is for affordable housing in this community, and how you intend to meet it. This morning, I read court documents that were submitted on behalf of the Borough Attorney to the court, and these documents talk about acquiring additional land in addition to the land that you already proposed to acquire for $1.9 million, so that, quote, "An application for a project of at least 52 affordable units can be the subject of a 9% tax credit application." There is only one project that I am aware of that has been submitted to the Borough Administrator. It's a 160-dollar per hour. if I were the head of the planning board, I might have made the same mistake that Mr....
We're talking about the ordinance only. This is about the set-aside ordinance.
All right, the ordinance. But certainly, I think that we really need to reach out to this company.
You're out of bounds.
We can't talk about that stuff. We just can't.
Because a public hearing on an ordinance is limited. And I've said this before. You can only talk about the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
So the ordinance, though...
It's a good way to stop the stream of consciousness and just focus.
I'm focusing.
Set-aside...
That's fine. What is a builder's remedy? Can you describe that?
I cannot, Mr. De Gregorio. You know, when the meeting's over, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
Will this ordinance make any difference?
I cannot. I'm so sorry. I just... I just... I cannot comment any further. This is all I can say.
Certainly...
David.
Please.
That's enough.
Please.
Enough? Okay.
No. We're just...
You're...
If you have any questions after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to talk to you.
David. Yeah, that's enough.
Well, I just would like to, maybe at this point, take an opportunity to say that I think the folks from Normandy should invite them back. Take them out for a nice dinner and talk to them. Well, if it would prevent... If it would prevent six hundred official units and the taxes going up...
I have no comment. Is there anyone else in the public? Anybody else in the public?
Mr. De Gregorio, if you have any questions after the meeting, feel free to talk to me.
Okay. You know...
Thank you.
And I will... If I can add one more thing. If I...
Don't let them yell. Okay. Okay, sir. Sir!
David, please.
No, I just wanted to say if I make a mistake...
It's not about the ordinance. You're done. You're done.
Well, certainly would have a man enough to apologize.
You're done.
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street, Anglewood Place. I spoke at the planning board against adoption of this ordinance because I believe the borough is remiss in setting up a plan and alerting the residents as to what your plan is for affordable housing in this community and how you intend to meet it. This morning, I read court documents that were submitted on behalf of the borough attorney to the court. And these documents talk about acquiring additional land in addition to the land that you already proposed to acquire for $1.9 million so that, quote, "An application for a project of at least fifty-two affordable units can be the subject of a nine-percent tax credit application." There is only one project that I am aware of that has been submitted to the building department that includes fifty-two residents, and that is the property currently in the southern part of town. So now we have a situation where there is an identified property in your submission to the court. There are pleadings before the mayor and council that will be addressed at an October 4th meeting using tax levy funds for affordable housing. We have litigation on the northern part of town about affordable housing, and we in the public have no idea what the plan is, how much, where, and what you intend to do. And will any of this be litigation? Since you are in litigation, you can...
You are not speaking on a set-aside.
I don't speak on a set-aside.
Excuse me. I'm listening to you. No... You always have the floor. No. I don't have the floor. You are...
I have not asked you a question, Ms. McMorro.
And you're making false statements as you always do with your false narrative.
I don't have a floor.
At every meeting, you have a political agenda. And I really feel bad for the residents of the town and what you are doing to them, Ms. Geiger. You are causing...
Ms. McMorro.
You are not. Excuse me. You are not more knowledgeable on this subject than I am. You are wrong now.
And here is that ordinance.
And that is why.
And nothing else.
That's what I'm speaking...
No, you're not. No, you're not.
That's what I am. I am speaking about...
You're campaigning.
I'm not running for anything.
Yes, you are.
No, but Debbie Sabari is,